43 a.m. and a quorum of the board is present. State Board of Education meeting of April 9, 2024 is called to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of the Agenda and Order of Priority. Are there any items board members would like to add or delete from the agenda? Dr. Robinson?
Did you call me?
I did.
Okay. I do have a resolution on charter schools I would like to add to the agenda.
So we have a, we have a motion from Dr. Robinson, support from Dr. Pugh. Dr. Robinson, would you care to summarize your resolution?
Um, yes, just very quickly. I think that we need a level playing field for all of the public schools in the state to compete on, and that's what this resolution tries to do.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion to include on the agenda, a, a resolution regarding charter schools, motion by Dr. Robinson, seconded by Dr. Pugh. Is there any other discussion associated with the inclusion of this on the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, Ms. Evans, a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else have anything else to recommend for the agenda? Ms. Snyder?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to introduce three separate resolutions. First, I motion to amend the agenda, to add an action item under K, to adopt a resolution entitled "Pass Liliana's Law."
Okay, so we have a, a motion from Ms. Snyder. Do we have a second? We have support from Mr. McMillan. Ms. Snyder, to you for summary, please.
I will read it into the record and then explain support for it.
If, if you'd be kind enough, if we could, if we could abbreviate since you do have three and since they are long.
I, I will read it into the record.
Very good.
Whereas Michigan lacks multiple layers of school safety provisions that put students at risk of injury leading to a lack of access to a free and appropriate education, even death, whereas various industries from building and construction to food and hospitality across the state require annual and/or monthly safety inspections, even surprise inspections to ensure citizens have safe access to the system's taxpayers' fund. Whereas environmental and infra- infrastructural inspection and maintenance is currently legislatively prescribed and funded in various ways and is paramount to the lives and academic achievement of Michigan students. Whereas annual inspections for health and safety violations are not required for schools in Michigan. Whereas children die every year in Michigan as a result of the lack of infrastructural accountability in our state. One such death was that of Liliana, a three-year-old girl that was crushed to death by a recall table. Whereas the legislature has been presented with multiple forms of language for Liliana's law, which would amend Act 451 of the revised school code. Liliana's law will require these inspections to prevent childhood injury and death in our schools. Our lawmakers have failed to work together, including ignoring over 30,000 signatures of support through change.org to pass legislation that would keep students safe. Therefore, be it resolved, the State Board of Education urges Michigan's legislature and Governor Whitmer to pass Liliana's law, House Bill 5530, and the Never Again Law, House Bill 5531, which would create an injury and death database to identify cause and effect relationships between our school's infrastructure and our children's traumatic experience, whether from environmental hazards, disease, violence, and more, and would require the Michigan Department of Education to oversee local school district compliance with an environmental safety for children in public education buildings to create meaningful preventative measures acquired, acquired through factual data.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. It's been read into the record. Ms. Snyder, to you for any additional information associated with inclusion onto the agenda.
Yes, so I think we need to add this to the agenda and pass it today with discussion. This mom has brought this before the legislature four times, and it actually does relate to events that have happened in other, in these other resolutions that, which I will discuss after we read them into the record. What continues to happen is what is considered these never events are considered rare and unique, but they add up. They're not rare and unique, and with action, what we can do is prevent them. And I think there's consensus in the legislature. I think they need our encouragement.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other discussion on the inclusion of this draft resolution on the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, please.
I, I just want to say that I am wholeheartedly for ensuring safety in schools. I'll be talking a little bit more during my report. Today actually is National Healthy Schools Day, so I support healthy and safe school environments. Also want to bring note to two resolutions that were passed, one in October of 2022 and one in March of 2023. One was the State Board of Education Resolution on Safe School Environments. The other one was State Board of Education Resolution on Safer School Environments, and I'll probably bring this up again, but I just want to make mention of that. Would like to hear more about the resolution that you're presenting now, Nikki, and see Board Member Snyder and see if there's any way that we can refer this to the Legislative Committee and hear more about it.
I'd just like to say one more thing about that. We need to pass this today because the Legislative Committee and the Educational Committee in the House needs our encouragement on this point now. Again, four times they've had the opportunity to pass the law. We're here at the table today. This is our opportunity.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Pugh. Ms. Snyder, any other discussion on the inclusion of this resolution onto the agenda?
I have a question.
Please, Ms. Snyder.
How, how do we currently track the injuries or deaths of students?
There, I, I believe that there's an investigation in each county associated with, with deaths in schools.
So the police are?
Well, the police are involved without, without doubt, and regarding any, regarding any death. And then there's a committee, Dr. Golzinski, is that correct?
Child Death Registry.
Child Death Registry in each of the 83 counties in the state of Michigan.
So that's not actually accurate because in Oxford, the police did not immediately investigate. The insurance company was first on the scene, and the child death record is not necessarily associated to school safety.
You said the police did not investigate in Oxford?
I'll read the next resolution in the record.
Very good. Any other questions?
What, what would the inspections look like?
So the inspections, that's something that would happen through committee, but it hasn't gotten to that point, so. And Liliana's mom has been very involved in what it would look like to define that. She's very, very engaged and knowledgeable on the fact that the Department of Homeland Security is who essentially is in charge of the infrastructure of our schools. We need to engage them on all levels. So this is a resolution that would ask the legislature to, in fact, engage further, write the law on those points, pass it.
Mr. Chair?
Excuse me for one sec. I just want to make sure that Ms. Tilly has, has exhausted her questions.
I, I would have liked to have more time with this and to see what her mom is asking for specifically.
So she did a press conference yesterday, and I'll be honest with you, she's very frustrated because she's been at this for years. Her daughter would be 11 today. She was three when she was crushed by that recall table. So she's been very engaged. Not that it would be a problem, I don't think, for her to sit down with you, but again, this is the opportunity for us to at least make the statement that we value what happened to her daughter.
And I don't, and I don't need to, to have a discussion with her. I mean, just to see the law that she is proposing, asking for.
Right.
The verbiage.
So, and I think we could engage with that. If we were to pass something like this today, we could engage with the legislature on that, and we should.
That's all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tilly. Dr. Pugh and Mr. Bullock?
I just want to reiterate, and, and thank you for bringing this before us, to Board Member Tilly's point, I would like to have more time to take a look at this and would, I propose that we send it to the Legislative Committee and that we're able to look to see what we have on the books and how we can make sure that we're being all encompassing and hear more about the current legislation that's on the books. So if you could give us a little bit more time to take a look at this. I received it, actually, I received it yesterday evening by the time that, that I saw it and definitely want to take a look at it. And again, thank you for standing up for, for this family, and I am all for infrastructure and school health and safety.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Mr. Bullock?
I'm, I'm gonna hold, because I, I think what I want to say is in reference to, after reading all three of them, it's more of a, but, uh, I yield.
Okay, all right, very good. Anyone else who would like to discuss the inclusion of this on the agenda? Uh, Ms. Lipton?
I just want to just make a note about process. We do have a Legislative Committee. I do think that to the extent that we bring resolutions forward, I mean, I think that we all need to understand that we are not legislators. We operate within a different capacity as in a, well, we, we are not, we are not part of the legislative branch, and the legislative branch does have their, their process. I do think that to the extent that we as a body put forward, put forward resolutions to inform the legislature or in a sense, speak with one voice, I do think that the, the process, just from my, you know, humble opinion, works better when we do have the time to come together and, and, and make a, an informed position so that it can have the intended effect on the legislature. I do think that this idea of sort of quickly, you know, putting, putting things forth and putting out resolutions, I, I don't think as a former legislator, it's going to have the intended effect. I do think though that when we do have a chance to review issues, discuss them in Legislative Committee and come forth with a very well-fought-out resolution, then it will have the proper intended effect or have a better chance of having the proper intended effect. So I absolutely concur with Dr. Pugh's notion of looking at this as a serious issue and taking it up in our Legislative Committee. I think this is, this is more appropriate to be dealt with more slowly. I do understand that, you know, I, I, I'm an attorney. I understand that when tragedies happen, you know, victims want justice, but this, this may not be the form for that. That's why we have court laws in place, so.
Thank, thank you very much, Ms. Lipton. Ms. Snyder?
To be clear, there was nothing quick about any one of these resolutions that are here before us today. Nothing quick. Liliana was three when she died. She would have been 11 today. She's been at this for years. As a matter of fact, she was told by a safety education leader in the state of Michigan who was hired by the same insurance company who investigated the Oxford shootings, that her daughter's death was not flashy enough. Okay, so there's so many details to these resolutions right now that we've had the opportunity to address in multiple scenarios. So nothing quick. No, I don't think I'm a legislator. I don't think any of you are legislators with respect, yes, to your past service, but right now what we're doing is simply adopting resolutions that ask our legislators to do their job. I'm very, it's very clear to me what I'm presenting to us today.
Thank you very much, Ms. Snyder, Ms. Tilly, and then we're going to have a vote.
This is the first time, like literally this morning is the first time I'm hearing about this. So that, that's what we mean by more time. It's not something that we don't want to support or figure out how to support or all of that at all. We want to know how to best move forward and move forward together, and we have to communicate to do that. Like some of our resolutions, we're like working on for months together to make sure everything is fleshed out.
Yeah, I didn't hear anything about the charter school resolution until 24 hours ago too, so I think we're all in the same boat, but that doesn't mean we can't come to the table and read it and consider it.
That doesn't mean that it didn't go through the committee.
If we haven't heard about Liliana's law, it's because we're not engaged.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Tilly, Ms. Snyder.
There's, there are a lot of issues that all of us work on, so I don't think that is even a fair statement. I can bring things to the table that you don't know about.
The problem is needing more time after this mom has fought for seven years is not the answer.
All right, ladies, thank you very much for, for your reflections. Ms. Evans, a roll call vote on the inclusion of Ms. Snyder's proposed resolution on the agenda.
Bullock?
Negative.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Pass.
Motion fails.
Thank you very much, Ms. Snyder. Your second resolution, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the agenda under item K to adopt a resolution to amend the seclusion and restraint law.
Do we have a, a motion? Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. McMillan. Ms. Snyder, to you.
Actually, I yield the time to Tom. He's going to voluntarily read it.
Okay. Resolution to amend the seclusion and restraint law, whereas Michigan lacks multiple layers of school safety provisions that put students at risk of violence, injury, discrimination, and not having access to a free and appropriate education. Whereas individualized education plans are paramount to the safety and academic achievement of Michigan students, whereas schools have indemnification of liability and are not legally held accountable to their actions or inactions. Whereas current MCL Section 380.1307(c) addresses proper use of emergency seclusion and restraint but is routinely not enforced in local districts, in which, in one such district, an eight-year-old suffer, child suffered from multiple physical injuries and broken bones from a school employee violently physically keeping him in a seclusion area, making it impossible for him to engage with his education because this law was broken. Whereas Michigan lacks holding schools accountable for violations of 380.1307(c) sub F, including when the aforementioned eight-year-old child spent 1,167 minutes in seclusion over the course of 25 days. Whereas Oakland County, Michigan's disabled students make up 90% of the under-reported seclusion and restraint instances in 2022, 23, whereas schools are allowed to create zones that are outside of a labeled seclusion room for purposes of excluding a child and bypassing the law. Whereas schools are not held accountable for proper reporting of seclusion and restraint occurrences, proper documentation of such occurrences, parent notification, or proper filing of seclusion physical restraint documentation forms. Whereas the state of Michigan states online training courses are acceptable to qualify those performing seclusion and restraint on students, whereas violating seclusion and restraint law has no consequence, not when the affirmation, aforementioned child was severely injured and appropriate medical assistance was not obtained, but for many other children in Michigan. Therefore, be it resolved, the State Board of Education urges Governor Whitmer, the Michigan Department of Education, Michigan Legislature, and Congress to make schools safe now and recommend the following. One, amend Act 451, Section 380.1307 to 1307H, to include mandatory state reporting, state oversight through compliance and monitoring. Amend Act 451, Section 380.1307H9E to include language qualifying red zone or other labeled areas in the definition of seclusion. Rescind laws that protect the indemnification of liability for schools and employees that break policies or laws that harm students. Amend Act 451, Section 30.1307 to include sub I outlining consequences for violating any or all of the act or law. Mandatory reporting to child protective services of the school and personnel involved. Investigation and public record-keeping of when a child is maimed or killed in a seclusion and restraint incident. And finally, encourage school, local school boards to create policy to protect the victim when reporting violations of 380.1307 are necessary and investigations are carried out by an independent party such as Michigan State Police or another agency outside of the school resource officer. When law, when laws or policies are written not followed and schools are released of liability by law for their actions or inaction, there is no justice for the countless students across our state that have been harmed by an unsafe educational environment and no motivation to follow the laws that are written with the intention to provide such safety.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. McMillan. Ms. Snyder, would you like to speak to the resolution as the introducer thereof?
Yes, so the most common thread in all three of these resolutions, which is present as to why we should consider this on the agenda today, is governmental immunity. Laws are written, not followed, students die or they're harmed, and nothing happens. So why would change happen? Why would anybody be motivated to follow the law that was written? And seclusion and restraint is one of those laws that is abundantly clear. Oakland County had 1,400 disabled students secluded and 704 restrained. That was in 2324, and it's an under-reported number. This particular boy left with multiple broken bones as a result. The law's not being followed if we as a board can come together and consider what it looks like to encourage the legislature to amend that law, to include consequences, to reduce the immunity of government officials when they break the law.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Snyder. Any other discussion on the inclusion of this resolution on the agenda? Dr. Pugh and then Mr. McMillan.
I'm looking at policies that this board passed, one on March 16, 2017, and then one before my tenure, December 13, 2006. Are those included in the crafting of this?
The original law itself we supported as a board? These would be amendments to that.
Again, I'm going to say that I totally support, and part of the reason for me being here is a focus to, for us to focus on safe and healthy schools. And so again, I would like to be able to do a little bit more research myself and be able to take it to the Legislative Committee. And it is not that I don't think, and no one around this table thinks that these are urgent issues, it's just that the decision that we make today is not going to influence the law any faster if we do it now or if we take it to the Legislative Committee.
Would you all consider applying that methodology to the charter schools resolution? Can we send that to the Legislative Committee first?
Well, let's just be clear, the Legislative Committee has discussed the charter school resolution.
Sure, discussed it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I still think the process itself, generally speaking, is not equitable. That's a very real thing that has happened at this table. We bring resolutions to the table that don't necessarily go to the Legislative Committee first.
Please.
I'll say this now because I did not make comments during discussion opportunity, but the resolution that was proposed backs up a resolution on charter school transparency that we passed as well as a FOIA request and some research that we did and data that we've provided at this table, so it builds on that, and it has been in the making for, for some months.
Right, as have these. So we're going to take up a charter school resolution, but not resolutions that are killing kids. But you care and you're here to serve.
And we want to do due diligence.
Yeah.
And we ask that you do the same.
Yep.
Anything more about the inclusion of this item on the agenda? Mr. McMillan?
I just appreciate the removal of governmental immunity. I know that many people talk about caring for kids, but I think their actions and those that don't want governmental immunity really make it clear that it's all about the adults in the system of education and protecting them as opposed to what's best for kids.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Bullock?
I still want to be thoughtful. So I've heard several comments that aren't necessarily accurate in trying to defend these two resolutions. I'm playing catch-up a lot of times, so this passed in 2016. This became a public act in 2016, and there have been resolutions that address public safety, public health in schools even since I've been here.
There have been. There was, there was one in '22 that the board passed. There was one in '23 that the board passed, both on, on safer schools. The board would like us to distribute copies of those resolutions about what the board has done. Be happy to distribute those.
Yeah, because so far like, and I don't, I'm not trying to be tit-for-tat, but I, being on the Legislative Committee, we've discussed the charter school stuff, things like that, but I know, I, I actually want to say you voted no on the last public safety resolution that was here on the table.
Because you wouldn't entertain an amendment to reduce government immunity.
So you're tit-for-tat, and you don't want to take a piece. You want to all or nothing.
Kids are dying.
All or nothing, but you, apparently you haven't cared about that over the last six, seven years.
That's not accurate.
Because you haven't addressed it.
Yeah, that is not accurate.
Let's, let's, let's focus on.
I still think that they need, well, qualified immunity or governmental immunity doesn't apply when you're actually doing, maybe it applies only when you're doing your job. If you don't follow your job, then you are subject to criminal charges, right? Is, am I correct, lawyer?
Yes.
Uh, Lipton? So the, the myth about government immunity or qual, doesn't apply if you actually violate the law. So when you follow the rules and you're doing your job and some unfortunate incident happens, you're covered, but if you're not doing your job, you're subject to prosecution.
Not these people.
Yeah. Thank you for teasing this up for me perfectly.
I hope it teases it up because it doesn't make, so.
We're, we're working on deciding whether this goes on the agenda or not. We're not debating the merits of.
So I think that we have, yeah, while all of these have merit and they do, I think that they are put together in a haphazard way, and they're not def, thoughtful, vetted, clear, concise.
You're speaking to the parents right now that wrote these resolutions.
Excuse me. He has the floor.
It's fine, she can budge in, I'm cool with that.
I'm not.
Uh, I just, as Ms. Tilly has said, like, they haven't been discussed, and as a former legislator, that if you want to have an impact and, and, and be impactful, just throwing out resolutions for a variable number of reasons other than to actually solve a problem is not helpful.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bullock. Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. So currently, there is nothing in the hopper regarding an amendment to seclusion and restraint in the legislature.
Correct, we are asking the legislature to entertain that.
Okay, so there's no bill number attached to this one?
No, this is a resolution to request it.
And I concur with my colleagues regarding if Legislative Committee could then look at this, discuss it, and through our channels, be able to find out, is there any appetite?
Yeah.
And what has been the discussion about some of these instances that have happened?
Yeah.
Have been reported regarding, are they looking to amend this? Are they looking to introduce more legislation regarding this to, you know, firm it up or whatever? And to our knowledge anyways, that has not, that's not in the hopper right now.
Correct. And here's a problem with continuously referring things at this table back to the Legislative Committee.
committee. With resolutions I continue to bring to the table that relate to things that have been researched, they're not quick, is that we slow play them, or we don't play them at all. That's my problem. So yes, Judy, I could refer it back to the committee that you run, but then we don't actually revisit it the way we always say we're going to revisit it. And then everybody gets to walk away from the table feeling good about themselves because they said, let's revisit this, and you don't.
I don't know if we're revisiting it, it's never been to the committee.
No, it's in reference to these resolutions. Because here's what we could do, we could pass it today. This is what these, these parents are experiencing, right? This is not just one parent. Again, it's not just a resolution that was thrown together. It wasn't quick. We can pass it, send it to the legislature, we want to be involved in the discussions, we can continue to have the discussions, and continue to make recommendations to them. That's something we can do today, that's something we should do today.
Anything more to, on the discussion to include this on the agenda? Hearing none, we could have a roll call vote, please. Ms. Evans?
Bullock?
Negative.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Thank you very much. Ms. Snyder, to you for your third resolution, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend Item G, just after presentation on school safety, comma, the current landscape, to add the adoption of a resolution on the school shooting in Oxford. I'm going to read it into the record.
We have a, we have a motion, if we could have a second before you read it into the record, please. We have a, a motion, we have a second by Mr. McMillan. Ms. Snyder, to you to read it into the record, please.
Whereas the Oxford, Michigan, shooting on November 30, 2021 at Oxford High School was a tragedy that could have been prevented if the best practices in threat assessment and emergency management noted below were followed. Implement an emergency operations plan, or EOP, in compliance with current federal mandate and state law, and make it available to the public for the purpose of transparency and accountability in providing access to a safe public education. When it comes to safety, public interest and parental access to EOPs always outweighs non-disclosure. In any circumstance where a student has been harmed as a result of a safety-related event or mass casualty has occurred, mandate that a full and independent investigation by a coordinated team of appropriate state and federal agencies that collaborate and coordinate with one another. In Oxford, a third-party investigation was not achieved by a governing body. The school district hired a lawyer that then hired a preferred firm to release a summary that did not effectively recall the wrongs of the event or the actions necessary to address next steps to ensure the events of Oxford do not happen again. Reform governmental immunity. In all private and public sectors responsible for providing safety, individuals are accountable to the negligence thereof. School employees are no different. Without appropriate consequence for negligence, schools remain unmotivated to make the changes necessary to keep kids safe, and our judicial branch does not have the legal foundation to hold school employees accountable to their actions or inaction. School officials in Oxford were not only not held accountable for their negligence that resulted in the death of four students, they were transferred to other districts in Michigan without consequence, serving in safety-related positions. Following a safety event that harms a student or where mass casualty occurs, proper reflection of the before, during, and after are necessary to ensure the EOP plan is effective. The individuals implementing it are supported and another event like it does not occur again. Put simply, we learn from the lessons this life teaches us, both individually and system, systemically. Lives are enriched and saved as a result of the change that this reflection produces. A genuine and independent third-party investigation was not appointed to oversee this process in Oxford and was interfered with by an insurance agency that represented both the school district and the Michigan Legislature. A sincere conflict of interest and disorderly procedural misstep. Whereas the parents who lost their children to this tragedy are our thought leaders and through reflection over time have come before our government and will continue to do so to encourage the change necessary to heal their community, prevent violence for other communities, and to serve the safety and well-being of students. Therefore, be it resolved that the State Board of Education urges the Michigan Legislature to repeal and amend the following items related to the FOIA and OMA and EOP laws. Repeal the blanket FOIA and OMA exemption related to EOPs, including each time it is updated in compliance with federal law. Amend current EOP laws to mandate full and independent investigations that shall include a determination of the competency, compliance, and negligence of implementation of the adopted EOP. Amend current law on governmental immunity to be provided only if proper implementation of the adopted and publicly available EOP is carried out and only when individuals involved in carrying the EOP out comply with a full and factual proffer of the details of the event as it occurred and are not found negligent of proper implementation of the EOP. Amend current law to define gross negligence as failing to implement, update, carry out, and reflect on critical incidents as defined by EOP laws. Amend current EOP laws to mandate independent investigations under the EOP's preparation, implementation, response, and recovery section of critical incidents that occur in schools take place in a before, during, after fashion, and be submitted to the governing body overseeing compliance with EOP laws. Failure to do so would be considered negligence in following the EOP laws. Amend current EOP laws to define the role of insurance companies by limiting their access and interference before a full and independent third-party investigation is completed and require that their role serve the damages to the community. Amend current EOP laws to require the consolidation and leadership of every governing aspect, from required submissions of updated EOPs, oversight and compliance, implementation, investigation, involvement of any publicly funded service of school safety and mass casualty events in education.
Thank you very much, Ms. Snyder. We have a motion, we have a second, had it read into the record. Any other discussion by any other board members?
I would like to speak to the motion first and the resolution. You teed it up perfectly. Government immunity if you follow the law. The problem is, the law was not followed, but we cannot FOIA the EOP, so we cannot see what the EOP was, where it was failed. And every single instance, these parents that came to trying to figure out what exactly happened, the door is shut on them. Whether it's the insurance companies that literally represent the schools and the government, or it's the details of the EOP itself, where they were failed, it, it doesn't matter, they can't access what happened to these students. Their children died, and they cannot reflect on it. And schools are the ones standing in their way. So that can go to court, but the prosecutor did, chose not to prosecute. And in the case that was brought before the judge, she said, there's governmental immunity because these facts are kept in the dark, they're secret, we hide them. So what good does that do? And literally, when you have a president that is supposed to serve in safety and education saying, your daughter's death isn't flashy enough, well, four students died to a school shooting, is that flashy enough? What is flashy enough for us to say, you know what, we can continue to refer our conversation to the legislative committee, but let's pass these resolutions that are well thought out, not quick, the parents are the primary authors on them, and let's move forward. Today is the opportunity. We've talked about these things multiple times. And if, if you've heard of them for the first time, again, there's a disengagement here I can't help you with. That's our job.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Snyder. Ms. Tilly?
Oh, I.
Sorry, Dr. Pugh, then Ms. Tilly.
I, you know, I guess there is no low. Board member Snyder, once again, I'm going to bring up these two resolutions that we passed. One was on October 11, the other of 2022, where, again, it's State Board of Education Resolution on Safe School Environments. The only no votes were Snyder and McMillan. On March 14, Resolution on Safer School Environments, the only no votes were Snyder and McMillan. The only thing that has changed here, and, and, you know, I hear the conjured-up manufactured emotion, but the only thing that has changed here is that we're in the middle of an election season. And here we are, once again, using this board table to push and, and tactics that exploit serious issues and the well-being and safety of our children. I will vote no on these, and yes, Board member McMillan, I do care about children. I'm not going to be bullied into voting for something that, one, we've voted on before, and the two of you have voted no. Number two, we can refer to the legislative committee and have more thought given to it? I will vote no. What I will do is propose that we have conversations about each of these topics, determine if there's anything that we need to add during legislative committee. And if you can't go along with that, then I will take it, and I will continue to be an advocate for healthy and safe schools. And again, shame on you, shame on you for saying that we don't have urgency when we've continuously promoted resolutions and been out advocating for safe schools, and you and Board member McMillan have voted no.
Thank you very much. Dr. Pugh, Ms. Tilly.
I, I'm just curious, this is something that you've known about for years. So you could have brought forth this resolution a, a long time ago.
I did bring forth a resolution related to it. You all said no.
I said yes, I voted yes.
Oh, yes.
To Liliana?
To get on the agenda, not to the resolution.
We're, we're on, we're on Oxford now, and we're going to stay focused on Oxford.
We have, we have resolutions on Oxford that we passed. I'm saying on the Liliana, Liliana's Law specifically.
But we're, we're on, we're, we're on the decision to include this Oxford resolution on the agenda or not.
We have passed resolutions to that. I'm just, the, the conversation that's being had of, we don't care for children and we don't know what's going on, and blah, 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 blah. My thing is, if you knew what was going on specifically to that, it should have been done already.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Mr. Bullock?
I, I just, I just second what President Pugh said, but I'd also want to go back to what Chair Pritchett said. It's, let's, because there's merit in what we're talking about, right? Let's talk to the legislature, find out who's proposing introducing laws that match this conversation in a thoughtful, intentional way, and let's see how we can help support the changing or, or making amendments to the laws that are currently in place to help safeguard the merit of these conversations.
Okay, thank you very much.
So I'm going to, I am going to follow up on Pam's conversation. There is merit to these resolutions, just as much as there were merits to the amendments I tried to make to the resolutions that you are referring to, that I eventually said no to, as a result of the fact that you would not come to the table and work together as a board to make sure that amendments on reducing and removing governmental immunity when the law is not followed, right? That's on you. What's not on me is that I don't support school safety because I wouldn't support your BS resolutions that don't include things like that to keep kids safe, to keep them from stop dying in schools because we're not following laws. That's a problem. If you don't think that's a problem and shouldn't be tie-barred to the other issues that you bring before the table, no, you're not leading in the conversation. And if you're going to come at me about being a bully, absolutely not. I have always started the conversation first with let's work together. That has never been a part of who I'm not, ever. You have an option today to support these things, put ego aside. It has nothing to do with elections, it has nothing to do with anything else. Have the discussion. Start there, here, in public, so that people can hear what you're saying and what you think about the content of the resolutions. Refer back to the legislative committee if that's the case, but at least consider having the discussion in the open. And I have brought resolutions before the table that relate to this. This one's far better because, again, primary author is the parents, and there are experts that were involved in this resolution, including emergency management operations expertise. And you still won't consider it? You're going to come after me? Say shame on you?
It's 10:30, and we're trying to get an agenda.
I know, you're trying to have more presentations about things that are not keeping kids safe and not educating them. I'm fully aware of what we have done since the seven years I have sat on this board. Yes, let's get to it. Those presentations that aren't keeping our kids safe and educating them, that's important.
Three, three of them are sitting in the front row.
Yeah.
Waiting to present.
Yep.
Dr. Pugh, anything more?
I, I do, I just want to say that, Board member Snyder, I did vote yes when you brought forward a resolution related to emergency operations plan. What I did expect is for that urgency to continue on and that we would have already had this in the legislative committee, but I did support you and that, that resolution when you brought it forward, if you look back at the, the minutes. And so that is why I will take these on my own, and I will take them to the legislative committee.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pugh. Ms. Snyder, anything else for the good of the group? Hearing none.
Let me just mention that, if I may, you know, sometimes these resolutions, you know, I guess in the past there was something called safety resolutions, but often they are very lacking and, and maybe they include things that are controversial, and so we try to amend to make them more palatable or more reasonable, and if those amendments get shot down, which they normally do, sometimes they don't, you know, it may influence our vote. Sometimes we've amended and actually voted yes. Oftentimes, we've tried to amend and they're shot down, and we feel like we can't in good conscience support amend or resolution. So just because something is, is titled, safe, has safety in it, doesn't necessarily mean that it actually is talking about safety, or maybe, it certainly doesn't talk about all safety, it could be missing some very important things, or maybe there's some errors in it that would not be very wise to support, so just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Ms. McMillan, thank you for the discussion board. Ms. Evans, please, a roll call vote on adding the third resolution for Ms. Snyder to the agenda.
Bullock?
No.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly? The cowardice of this board is disgusting.
Board, may I please have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Let's move it.
Movement by Dr. Pugh, second by Dr. Pritchett. Any discussion? Hearing none, please, a roll call vote.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Absent.
And Tilly?
Tilly?
Also absent, let's go.
Also absent. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Board, you have an agenda. At this time, Ms. Liz Evans, State Board Executive, will introduce members of the State Board of Education.
Good morning. You've just been listening to Dr. Michael Rice, Chairperson of the State Board and State Superintendent. To his left around the table are Board President, Dr. Pamela Pugh from Saginaw, Board Co-Vice President, Ms. Ellen Cogan Lipton from Huntington Woods, NASB delegate, Dr. Mitchell Robinson from Oakhamas, and it had been Ms. Nikki Snyder from Dexter, along with Ms. Candace Jackson, Michigan Teacher of the Year. Back to the table, to my right are Mr. Tom McMillan from Oakland Township, Board Treasurer, Mr. Marshall Bullock from Detroit, Board Co-Vice President, Ms. Tiffany Tilly from West Bloomfield, and Board Secretary, Dr. Judith Pritchett from Washington Township. Virtually, we have joining us, Ms. Stephanie O'Day, the Governor's K-12 Policy Advisor, ex officio.
Thank you very much, Ms. Evans. Public may register to provide comment during the public participation portion of the meeting at approximately 1:00 PM. Those wishing to make public comment must register before 1:00 PM. To provide public comment by telephone, please complete the registration form on the MDE webpage, www.michigan.gov/MDE. To provide public comment in person, please complete a green public comment form when you arrive here at the meeting location. These instructions are listed on the MDE webpage at www.michigan.gov/MDE. The first item on today's agenda for the committee of the whole meeting is the Presentation on Advanced Placement African American Studies. This presentation will share information on the AP African American Studies course offered at East Kentwood High School and several other high schools in Michigan. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Delsa Ch. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Delsa Chapman, Deputy Superintendent, the Division of Educator, Student and School Supports, Ms. Melissa Manning, Assistant Principal, East Kentwood High School, Kentwood Public Schools, Mr. Sunil Joy, Executive Director of Research and Innovation, Kentwood Public Schools, Mr. Matthew Vriesman, Teacher and 2023 National History Teacher of the Year, East Kentwood High School and Kentwood Public Schools, and students. Joining us are Keon Amna, Olivia, and I feel like we are one student shy. Is that right?
V.
V.
And, okay.
Amna was ill this morning.
Again?
Amna was ill this morning.
Very good. Okay. So Keon, Amna, and Cody?
V.
Key?
V.
V. Okay. V. Very good. Thank you very much. This is an informational presentation, and no Board action is required. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Good morning, Board. We are excited to have with us today guests from Kentwood Public Schools with a presentation on AP US History by East Kentwood High School. Mr. Matt Vriesman will lead us in the presentation. He also will have an opportunity for all of the guests to introduce themselves and have words. Matt, welcome.
Hi. Thank you very much. Thank you, Board. I'm Dr. Rice. Good morning. My name is Matt Vriesman, and I teach history at East Kentwood High School. I have a few fellow Falcons with me. Would you like to introduce yourselves?
I'm, sorry. I'll go. I'm Olivia Leepart. I'm a senior at East Kentwood High School.
I'm V. Igonoye. I'm a senior at EK.
I'm Keon Bakary. I know I don't look it. I'm 15, I'm a sophomore.
My name is Melissa Manning, and I'm an Assistant Principal at East Kentwood High School.
And I'm Sunil Joy. I'm Executive Director of Strategy and Innovation at Kentwood Public Schools.
Okay. So we did introductions. So today, we're here to talk about who we are at EK, at East Kentwood, our mission, some of the indicators of success that we're having, our next steps, and most importantly, of course, we'll hear the student perspective on our rigorous history courses. First, a little bit about who we are at KPS. We are one of the largest school districts in the state. We're located just south of Grand Rapids. We are one of the only three schools in our region that has had significant enrollment growth in the past decade, and we are the most diverse school in Michigan, and actually the fourth most diverse high school or school district in the United States. And our mission at Kentwood Public Schools really is empowering all of our students. And for us, that means celebrating our diversity and also making sure that there is equitable access and opportunity to our most rigorous courses. So a little bit about me and my background. I've been teaching for 16 years in Kentwood, also around the world, in Kuwait and Korea. I got my master's degree in US history. Specifically in US history, my focus was Black political debates, 1930s through the 1950s. And this past year, I was honored to be named the National History Teacher of the Year, which has been a really exciting opportunity and experience to talk to many people, so we're so thankful to be here today. And really, when we are talking about who we are at Kentwood Public Schools, and I'm going to talk specifically about social studies, but this really goes for everything we do at Kentwood Public Schools, our mission is about empowering students. And in social studies classrooms, that really means we're trying to safeguard democracy. And our approach or our philosophy isn't extremely unique. We really stand on the words of the Michigan Department of Education. So I really wanted to read from the US History and Geography Content Expectations from the MDE. "The study of history and historical disciplines help to locate ourselves in both time and space, and thus help us think about who we are and about our possible futures." And I love these words because history is, sometimes it gets bad rap, as some people even say, boring. A bunch of memorizing facts, not them, of course. But it's not just memorizing facts and dates. It's really about investigating who we are in our own context and how our society developed the way that it did, specifically for the purpose of imagining what type of future that we want to build. Because these are the future stakeholders of our democracy, and we want them not only to understand how we got to this place, but to start seeing themselves as historical actors and thinking about our future. In order to do that, Michigan students need the best understanding of the world and its past that we can give them. This promotes exactly the type of reasoned thought our students deserve and that democratic societies so desperately need. So again, this is more from the MDE, these words. When we empower our students, we're safeguarding our democracy, because American democracy depends on, well, it will just depend on our students, but we need our students to understand American core values, right, as presented in our founding documents, and understand the beauty of the tools that these documents and these values give us to continually try to shape our society in a way that lives up to those values. In order to do that, for a democratic society, we need to be able to understand multiple perspectives, right? So not everyone agrees exactly how we got to this point, and that's a fact, right? And through education, we are exposing students to many different perspectives, and so they are developing their own opinions, their own ideas about what they are going to do when they are the primary stakeholders. And that really is getting into the next points. We want students to see themselves as actors in building communities that align with those values. So again, these words are really all from the MDE, and it really lines up with what we're trying to do at Kentwood Public Schools. And then specifically, I think all of these reasons that the MDE describes of the purpose of socialized education is why teaching Black history is vital. Black stories and voices are key to US history curriculum. It's also why we are very proud to be one of the first schools in the state to be offering the brand-new AP African American Studies course, and scholars will be talking a little bit more about that in a little bit. And so really, I, this is where I'm tempted to really get in the weeds, but okay, if it's not the history classroom, then you want, they're more interesting than me, anyway. But this is just an example from the MDE US History Geography Content Expectations. What are students required to know about the Progressive Era, the turn of the century? And students, you know, MDE requires students to understand the Great Migration, the largest internal migration in American history, millions of African Americans moving from the South to the North, very much shaping the community that we live in today. And then also, in the Content Expectations, it describes, students need to know about the growth and change of the Progressive Era in the early 20th century and the rise of segregation in the South. And that's all that the curriculum standards say about the rise of segregation. And the notice, because there's a geographic location attached to that, it leaves you to potentially wonder, well, what about the North, right? Because in Michigan, the MDE says, we are committed to offering our students the best understanding from multiple perspectives of how our society developed. Maybe there's a question still, right? Well, what about the North? And this is why I love teaching this pilot course, AP African American Studies, because that gives us a lot of time and space to delve specifically into the experiences, for example, of people who participated in the Great Migration and came to the region where we are from, in West Michigan and Grand Rapids. And so that is why in history class, I think the best practice to empower our students to make history relevant is to keep history local. So this is from a lesson that I made along with the Grand Rapids Public Museum about the fight against Jim Crow in Grand Rapids and a Supreme Court case that took place, a Michigan Supreme Court case that took place in 1927. And, well, I know, Keon, you definitely might not get it, but you were inspired by learning about this. And really, that's what it is when we're digging into local Black history. We are finding new heroes, and we're really seeing ways that people in our own community help to strengthen our community's commitment to its core values. And then it's through these relevant discussions, this is where the real magic happens, and I don't need to tell you about student discussion because they're going to be discussing for us. But that's really where we learn to evaluate others' opinions and interpretations and to develop and improve on our own. So by taking this approach and using some of these methods, what are we seeing? We're seeing that more and more students, when they see that the history class is available, the rigorous courses are relevant, they're much more likely to engage, and it's really possible to increase the pool of students who are willing to challenge themselves with rigorous social studies classes. And so, all right, next slide. One way that we, one way that we're doing this, and Ms. Manning, one of our administrators at East Kentwood, is going to talk about some of the ways, beyond just making relevant curriculum, some of the ways that we're making sure everyone in our community understands the opportunities that we have available. So Ms. Manning will talk about this in a little bit. This is just a photo of our freshman orientation information night. We want to make sure that everyone in our community understands the value of taking a more rigorous social studies course. And through these methods and these practices, we've seen a 300% increase in enrollment of Black students in AP US History. And at Kentwood Public Schools, we are much more, much closer to an equitable standard where our most rigorous classes match the diversity of our district than is state norms and national norms. So we're very proud of that. And I want to hand it over to Ms. Manning briefly to talk about, I mean, it's not just, again, creating that curriculum, but it's having a school-wide approach and vision. We need support from administrators, so, Ms. Manning.
I want to echo the words of Mr. Vriesman and say thank you for the opportunity, for allowing us to be here today. I'm going to share quickly because I think that the most impactful is going to be our students. So I do want to center us around the strategic plan that our district has been working on before we do hear the words of our students, though. A few years ago, our district began the work of creating a strategic plan, and today we are focusing on the equitable opportunities and outcomes for our students. It is our core belief that it is our mission and to make sure that we are celebrating the diversity of our school and what makes our school beautiful. And when we do that, when we elevate our students' voices, when we provide equitable access and opportunities for all of our students to see themselves as rigorous learners, that's connecting us to our core values. How do I do this? Nope, I did something very wrong. How do we make this go away? There we go. All right, don't want to do it again. Nope, that's right.
You know what? I'll just be a clicker.
You just be the clicker. How about we do that? Thank you. All right. So one of the things that we have done this year that is aligned to our strategic plan is by helping our students use their voices in our decision-making. We believe that we are facilitators, and we are here to serve our students, so the best way that we can do that is by lifting up the voices of our students. This year, we have gone into several classrooms to collect student perception data and collect student voice around what they want our school to look like and how we can make sure that we're providing everybody the opportunity to know the rigorous coursework that we have and how to get us really from where we are to where we want to be. And so the students gave us some really great suggestions. One of the things that we had done, go ahead, Matt, is creating, as you can see, their student voices up there, everything charted. We took that work and then we created an intentional plan. So some of our next steps included creating an AP Ambassador Program, which our three students here are a part of that program. And we're doing this to really spread awareness of the rigorous coursework that we have. We have fabulous classes, but not all students are aware of the offerings that we have. And we find that, you know, we can put things on websites, we can, we have our course books, but it's really going to be peer-to-peer to share their experiences. And we found that some of our students had a false idea of what our AP classes really were. So they're able to give their shared experiences, and that's been very valuable. We also had an AP night, which our AP ambassadors ran. They were greeting people and showing the guests their experiences and introducing them to teachers. So we really are all about empowering our students and giving them the tools to be future leaders. We've also worked with One Goal, which is an organization to help us create more equity in our classes, and we had a really great session yesterday with them where they were guided through, and they helped guide One Goal through processes to kind of create visions of profile of a graduate and think about what we want our students and schools to look like in the future. And they're a part of revisiting and revising our AP classes and prerequisites to make sure that we are just really broadening that participation and making sure that our, all of our rigorous courses reflect what our hallways look like, too.
Okay. And then, I know we'll get into the students, they'll be far more interesting than us, but one more indicator of success. How is it going? That we are increasing passion in social studies and getting more and more students to enroll in rigorous courses? Well, if you put our school and our students up against any other schools in the state on their constitutional knowledge, we are the 2024 We the People state champs. So that means Kentwood Public Schools, socialized education, we're doing something right. And by the way, the slide really should say back-to-back state champs, because that would be more accurate. So last couple of years, you know, some of the fruits of getting more and more students involved in rigorous socialized classes, which, by the way, have nothing to do with the We the People team, so way to go, team and Mr. Robbins for that. But this is really one thing we're very, very proud of. So now, let's get to the more interesting part. Students, scholars, so happy that you guys could come, and a few different questions. Why did we want to take, or why did you want to take an AP history class? And potentially, what's maybe the biggest benefit of being a part of one of these classes? So.
Okay, I'll start. I chose an AP history class because this is, I've never taken an AP class before. I never necessarily thought like I could. I never thought like my grades were good enough to do so. And when I heard about this class, I knew I would be learning more about our history and specifically Black history, and I didn't necessarily hear too much about it as much as I wanted. So I chose to take this class. I've ended up really, really enjoying this class. One of the biggest benefits, I think, is I feel a lot of pride taking this class. And I think just knowing that there were only like a few of us able to take this class just makes me feel really good, and I just really enjoyed it so far.
Just the other day, I had seen a mural that had said, when you finally learn your history, you are truly liberated. And with that, I believe that that is one of the more, that encapsulates like how I truly feel about taking AP history classes, because I really like getting ready to take these classes in high school truly prepares you to like launch you through a college and like any endeavor that you might take in the future. And I believe that I signed up for AP African American Studies because I believe it was the most interesting course available for me, and I knew that I'd be making history by being a part of one of the first classes on my side of the state to participate in it.
Keon? Well, I took AP history because I want to learn history as it was. I didn't want to learn history as told by, you know, some random guy in Missouri in the 90s. I wanted to read from people who made history, you know, primary sources. I wanted to.
I love it.
I wanted to see multiple perspectives on how events unfolded. Like, you know, for example, in AP US History, when we looked at the Reconstruction Era after the Civil War, you really got to evaluate the extent to which Reconstruction was effective. You know, I was always taught, like, for example, in middle school by the popular memory education, that Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation, you know, led to the total freedom of slaves forever. But after reading accounts from, you know, former slaves, from white southerners, you really learned that all those former slaves are sort of re enslaved in a way through sharecropping and that sort of all the Reconstruction efforts kind of led to nothing after Rutherford B. Hayes ended all Reconstruction programs. And I feel like as a result of taking these AP history programs, I have a better understanding of why and how the world works, and for both trivial things and really notable things, like, for example, British marching bands, their style comes from Ottoman and Safavid gunpowder empires. Or we can see that a lot of the patterns we see in society of poverty and systemic racism come from the intentional effects of redlining and institutionalized discrimination.
I think you can. So going into third question, I mentioned we do a lot of local history in our class. Why do you think it is important to study local history, or what does that meant for you to learn local Grand Rapids history?
Well, I think to best answer this question, we could take a look at an example. Dr. Emmett Bullock. Dr. Emmett Bolden was the first Black dentist in Grand Rapids. He lived in downtown Grand Rapids. And in Grand Rapids, the hottest movie theater at the time was the Key Theaters in the nineteen twenties. Everybody who was somebody was going there and met. Dr. Bolden was somebody, a South High graduate, star athlete, star scholar. Like I said, first Black dentist, friends with many famous jazz musicians such as Count Basie and El Fitzgerald. Anyways, he went to see a film with some friends, but he was denied an entry-level ticket and told that they were sold out. But of course, as soon as he stepped to the side, a white couple behind him, you know, they were able to buy an entry-level ticket. And so he had enough and decided to sue the court and teamed up with lawyer Oliver Green to challenge the city's racist policies. And, you know, this story is long and sadly, I don't have enough time to fully go over all the details. But after a lot of debates and a lot of instances of sadly police brutality, Green and Bolden won the case with the Michigan Supreme Court and Jim Crow laws were declared illegal in the state of Michigan. And I have a question, have you ever heard about this case? I didn't until I took his class. I'm wondering why we don't learn about this. And if I'm gonna be honest, I think this question itself is kind of self-explanatory because local history is important to learn because it is history. It's someone's life and their effort. It shaped the world we live in today.
V, we had an opportunity to go to a panel discussion at our local museum. That was pretty meaningful for you. Could you tell us a little bit about that and local history's impact?
Yes, at this panel, I was given the opportunity to ask questions and like give my response to former graduates from South High. These graduates were special because they were the last graduating class before the high school was shut down. And also fun fact, South High is also where our president Gerald R. Ford went. Keep in mind, I have like a point. What they had talked about was how it was a very successful school, it was multiracial, and it was mostly Black. And with that, they also had received a lot of flack and feedback because of how successful it was going. People always decided to focus on the more negative aspects, which like happened less frequently. But they still decided to magnify those experience, I mean, those events. For me, I noticed that it related back to my current-day experience at EK. EK, we have a lot of successful endeavor, we have a lot of successful things. Specifically like our athletics department and our test scores and whatnot. But when we are perceived in the news, it is mostly because of a singular event. And when people think about EK, they think of it as some type of jungle or some place where students run in the halls. And I believe that these two connect and overlap with each other because, just because of the success of this mostly Black school that's also multiracial and very diverse. It's important to call back and like realize their history and how like it repeats itself.
Thank you, V. In that evening, we were in a room with a lot of important people in Grand Rapids, a couple of the most important historians of our city. And so there was open mic time and they're passing around the mics. And I'm like, I'm not gonna talk in front of all these impressive people. And all of a sudden, they're walking our way. I'm like, what's going on? And V standing up and just made this brilliant point, this connection between former South High Grand Rapids Public Schools and our school, East Kentwood, about multiracial spaces that are excellent spaces. And sometimes how they are perceived in the news, I thought was accurate. And you said it was brilliant and like everyone, and everyone in the room was just nodding. And one of the preeminent historians in Grand Rapids history is like, that is exactly what has happened in our community. It was a brilliant moment. So we, you know, we're talking about, you know, we're talking about it all, right? You said it's history, it happened, that's why it's valuable to talk about. So why do you think we should study and analyze times in American history when society has moved toward and away from its core values?
Well, again, I'd like to point out that I think this should be common sense, that we should study truth and history. Anyway, we should study these often difficult times to learn about because most of us, I'm hoping at least, care about society and would like to see it be the best it can be. And by recognizing the faults of America, we can further see how it needs to be improved and make up for wrongdoings. Our founding fathers laid down these beautiful words of liberty, but we found that they never really lived up to them. Remember, Thomas Jefferson was a slave owner who stole his ideas of life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness from John Locke, an English philosopher who also owned stock in the slave trade. And seeing as how the country was built on slave labor, for example, the White House was built by slaves. And its institutions were founded with the intent of keeping Black folk down. Like, for example, during the New Deal, FGR's federal housing program denied its benefits to Black individuals. Today's society often oversimplifies these stories and tells us, for a common example from American education, that Malcolm X was this violent rebel, that MLK was much more peaceful. Well, nobody really thought that at the time, seeing as how the CIA sent many letters to MLK with death threats. And if you actually take the time to sit down and read Malcolm X's story in his autobiography, he is nothing more than a powerful thinker. What I stand for is truth. We need to recognize and criticize our bad history, learn from it, and become better as a nation, as a people. We can't cage the potential of our country by binding us to the archaic words of the failed men who were founding fathers. If I could talk to George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, Hamilton, what I'd say is, "Thank you for these values, now let us use them for good." We have to be willing to change our thinking with the times. In order to change and progress as a nation, we must think critically and learn to deal with our past. Really, I see ourselves as following in the footsteps of Cardigie Woodson, the founder of Black History Month. We are fighting to preserve history for the seeking of truth because Black history is human history.
All right. So we'll end this last question, specifically on the AP African-American Studies course. You are involved in, as you said, a historic pilot, so next year it will roll out fully to all schools in the country who want to take it. What have you learned in AP African-American Studies that you didn't get from other courses? Maybe it helped you understand your own context or experiences, but what has stuck out to you in our curriculum?
So AP African-American Studies has opened up discussions about intersectionality within the context of African-American history. For example, we read the first-ever slave narrative from a woman, Harriet Jacobs. It's not uncommon to read slave narratives, but they're all usually by men. Even abolitionists didn't want to publish the narratives by women because of the sexual violence that they wrote about. AP African-American Studies is one of the only classes that has given women significant, a significant role in Black history. It, also in this class, one of the main critic, like criticisms of AP African-American Studies or a misunderstanding of this class is that it's only from one perspective, and that is not true. The student voice is something that we take really like very, very seriously. And Mr. Vriesman does a good job like guiding us through it and like shining light on what we have to say in our voices. But, for example, our class got to take the Harlem Renaissance and we did a research project on it. My topic was the criticism of the New Negro movement from Black Americans. And this allowed me to look in from the other side, seeing a new perspective of how Black Americans didn't necessarily see the New Negro movement as the best thing for them. There wasn't a lot of inclusion within this topic. Also, while forming my own opinions, I learned stories of Billie Holiday during the Harlem Renaissance and her strong strange fruit. I've heard it before, but I never truly listened to it until I got into this project, along with other projects that I've done for another class. But in this song, you know, she sheds light on what's really happening and the injustices that Black Americans endured in the South, in the South. And this is something that I probably wouldn't have looked at if I wouldn't have taken this class, if I wouldn't have picked this topic. We, I got to form my own opinion on how I saw things. My classmates as well, they went through their projects, they got to form their own opinions. This isn't a one-sided topic, this isn't a one-sided class. We're all allowed to make our own opinion and it's a safe space to do so. So, yeah.
All right, V, you want to close out? Tell us, what have you learned from AP African-American Studies that you hadn't learned in other courses?
AP African-American Studies is more than just a history class. It is an interdisciplinary course that differs from other courses due to it like also, sorry, due to it talking more about art and literature and also music. And with that, I had also had chosen to do my project about the singer Bessie Smith. With Bessie Smith, she was seen as a radical within the music industry at her time. She never shied away from discussing taboo topics when in her music. And she also, most importantly, did not shy away from the use of Ebonics or AAVE in her music. This is very important because within that, she, she didn't shy away, she didn't cower away just to be seen as palpable and more professional for a white audience and for a white lens. She didn't, and this is important because nowadays, we're told you must speak a certain way. And seeing her do this so long ago just really shows how important the fight to like preserve your like, like way, our way of living and like our speech.
Thank you so much, V. And a lot of that, what you heard, this is their own topic choice and they delved into it. They're really teaching me some of these topics for the first time. It's been an awesome experience, so thank you so much. Not easy to sit here and give us all of your thoughts like that, but that was awesome. Appreciate you. And now we want to say again, thank you, everybody, and open it up for some questions.
Thank you very much, presenters, we appreciate it. Dr. Robinson, Dr. Pugh, Mr. Bullock.
Good, first of all, we are all going to be working for you three very soon. So I loved everything that you all had to say. Thank you for giving the students a voice in this, I think that was really powerful. I have a thing about the word rigor, so I'm just gonna pick at that one little thing. And I hope, and my guess is that this is what's happening. I would hope that truth is not limited to just rigorous courses, right? We do a lot of that in schools, right? That these students can take these classes, but everybody else gets this. And I'm hoping that what I'm hearing here, the rhetoric that I'm hearing here, is that we all deserve an education that's based on the truth and honesty and telling the real story. I feel the same way that you did about, you were talking about the dentist. I learned some things about US history in a couple of HBO shows a year or so ago that I'm, and I had a very good public school education, but I knew none of that about the Tulsa Race Riots, for example. Knew none of that, until I was watching a science fiction show on HBO, come on. So I hope that we're weaving that kind of content through every course, from pre-K through 12, through grade 12, and hopefully beyond. I also, I'm a music teacher myself, and I love the influence of music throughout all of your anecdotes, throughout all of the coursework. I think we need a big discussion and maybe redefining what we mean by core subjects. Because as a music teacher, I think what we do is at the core of a lot of learning that happens in schools. So thank you for bringing up those anecdotes. And then the other thing, I'm just gonna finish by saying, you said something at the beginning about Kentwood's reputation. And I don't know what it is in that area, but I can tell you from music teachers across the state, from just teachers across the state and from people that live in this state, the Kentwood School District is seen as a beacon. It's seen as a, as an indicator of quality, of high standards, of diversity, of thoughtfulness. I've placed student teachers in your schools, they've had great experiences. I know a lot of the teachers that work in your schools, that teach music, they're among the best in the state. So I have a very different kind of take on the reputation of your school district. And I think a lot of people in our state do, so thank you very much for everything you shared today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson, and Dr. Pugh.
My goodness, I totally agree with my colleague, Dr. Robinson. We will be working for you all very soon. I just wish I was as mature and as bright as you are at your age. Just, I have a couple of questions and thoughts. I think, Ken, you brought up institutional racism. And you talked about really focusing, all of you talked about focusing on local history makers, which is really important. And I guess my question, especially in light of, this is kind of a question about College Board and how this has all come about, especially given that in Florida, there had, there was pressure placed on what could be in the current form of the AP coursework. And just wanting to get your thoughts on how are you integrating current movements? And can you, are you? And especially as we're talking about institutional racism and racism that still exists. If there was never another racist event, there's still the residuals of what was before. So just want to get your thoughts on that, as well as DEI that's coming under attack. So I'll roll all of that into one question.
Okay, yeah, we, well, first off, we said this is the pilot, so we're literally, sometimes feels like I'm, we all as a group are constructing the plane while it's still in the air because, yes, we are definitely going to be getting to more modern issues. So we're a couple of days out from spring break, so we are about in the early seventies right now. So we will be getting into that part of the course, we have not yet, but that is definitely in our standards. And really, as we're going through historical events, we're continuously bringing them back to why is that relevant for us today? So, yes, it is in the course.
So then, what happened in Florida will not impact the teaching here in Michigan and how AP is rolled out?
No.
Okay, I like to hear that. And good that you are able to hopefully then influence the pilot and what actually rolls out. Just another question, as I was looking at the photos, does the AP class, that, does the African-American AP class, does it reflect the diversity of the school?
This year, it does not. So we have a very small class, and it is, we have more African-American students in that course than our general hallways. But this is, like I said, it's the pilot and we hadn't even, we're in the information nights and last year I didn't have any booths or I wasn't out. Now the word is getting out, so I'm really excited to see our enrollment numbers. They told me after spring break, but I still haven't seen them.
You all said, you know, African-American history is, is American history, is human history. As someone pointed out, there was one more question, if I can't find it, I'll just, oh. And then one other piece that you talked about is that it was, what I understood you to say is that the history kind of like stopped at the South. So we have local history that's being taught. We also have current social movements that you'll get to. And then that migration from the South to the North and how that impacts current gaps and disparities, redlining, or will that be discussed?
Yeah, so I was just why, I just chose that example as a reason why I love being a part of this pilot. Because if you're just following the standards as they are, as that description, the specific discussion on segregation was that it was a Southern institution. Of course, that is not
That's true.
True at all. And this course gives us time, you know, teaching AP class, teaching all classes, you're always like racing to try to get to the content, right? But this class gives us time to really delve into multiple experiences of people who participated in the Great Migration throughout the country. But, and then we take special interest in people who moved to West Michigan and what that experience was like and versus what they hoped it was gonna be like, what Michigan had a very strong Civil Rights Act on the books, one of the stronger ones in the country. And so we, we're the historians, we're gonna take people's experiences. We're gonna say, okay, Michigan made this claim about what type of state was gonna be for people who moved here. And now we will evaluate, we'll form our own opinions. Did Michigan live up to its promises to the people who lived here? So it's a big part of my class.
I'd just say thank you all and congratulations
Thank you.
on being this rich teacher for you.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Mr. Bullock?
Thank you, thank, just thank you for your presentation. It was refreshing, I am just totally impressed. It gives me a lot of satisfaction and just, I'm full from hearing your, your, your process of going through this class. And, and these are conversations I have at home with my own kids, these are conversations everywhere I go. I actually wanted to know about the projects. When you do those projects, do you then present to the class? So that you guys are teaching each other how, what, all of that instead, okay. I, I was impressed with, like, I give speeches all the time that talk about, you said it's a human history, but I give them all the time, say it's Black history is American history, Black history is world history, it's history. But you, you guys brought up things that people rarely know. You brought up the Constitution. This brings you conflict from our founders, the founders of the document. But yet they were slave owners, et cetera. Abe Lincoln and emancipation. But yet people denied, people still held people in slavery, not just the sharecroppers, those things. And after you, I thought you guys were like, after hearing you, if I closed my eyes, I'd have thought you guys had just graduated from college somewhere. You know, you guys were, were, were very articulate and intentional about words that came out of your mouth. I do have, uh, a question about how are you guys, she brought up the Florida stuff, reconciling or having conversations about the attack on diversity, inclusion, justice?
I will say, for the very beginning of the class, right? You have a bunch of high school students come into your room, and of course, they've got a lot of other things going on in their lives. And maybe, uh, the content of the curriculum they're about to take in is not always the first thing. And really, our first job as a teacher is to make sure that they understand that what we're gonna do is really relevant and it's important. So, really during that first week, uh, we just, we look at a lot of statements, tweets, comments about our course. And the adults are doing the heavy lifting for me, like, I, I don't really have to argue too hard that this is relevant. Uh, because the adults are making a lot of noise about the course, right? And so, that being said, we don't actually talk about the drama surrounding the course a lot. Because, I mean, that's not really what we're in control of, and even really like what's going on in Florida. And one of the reasons I was so excited to teach this course is because I would, I would read about this course, right? There's no other high school course that I know of, that anytime there's a change, there's a New York Times story about it and a Washington Post story about it. And so, I was just interested to actually get into it. And kind of all my concerns about, you know, whether we're going too much one way or too much the other way have been, again, it's my first time going through it, but from my opinion, it's been totally alleviated. Like, this course is fantastic. There's so much depth. And again, the opportunity, the things that they talk most about were not things that I was teaching them. This is stuff that they were learning on their own because it interested them. So, the spa, the course gives space for that, and I think that's why it's so powerful. But, um, I have never seen a high school course go into this depth, and I love that about it. So, really what's going on outside of public schools, we can't, we can't control. But what's happening inside public schools, because the course is just all positive.
Yeah, I only brought it, she had mentioned Florida, but I even, like, growing up here and just going through how, you know, locally, the state, you know, when University of Michigan tried to dissolve, dissolve affirmative act, these things affect the school process and what you're learning. And I, I'll leave you with something that I always say, I wanna hear your response to this. Black people have endured some of the most heinous atrocities in history. And yet we've been some of the greatest contributors to society with stolen ideas and things like that. So, how do you guys, like, relate to that?
I truly think that statement is true. It's accurate a hundred percent.
Like, you a sophomore?
Almost all of, almost all of world culture comes from black culture. Like, the first mainstream pop music was jazz music, which evolved from blues music and black neighborhoods.
I'm coming to visit you.
So, to, can I add on to what you were saying about your first question about, um, just going more in-depth about it? I feel like, um, high school students, we talk a lot. We're very communicative. And of course, you know, social media and whatnot. Looking at problems in different states or even in our own communities, being like the most diverse school in Michigan, feeling kind of isolated, I think that was something that happened at first. We kind of felt isolated with the class. As we learned more about this topic and as Mr. Vriesman, like, took us through this entire course, we've gotten so much more comfortable. And like he was saying, it is a small class. There's only, I think, thirteen of us. But it's, it's been like such like an intimate class, I guess you could say, because we've gotten to know each other. Like, we communicate with each other all the time, you know? We see each other every day for only an hour, but we talk so much about some of the most important things, some of the stuff that we won't talk about in our English classes or when we leave the school, you know what I mean? So, I feel like, um, focusing on what's going on outside of our community will kind of, not dumb down, but kind of make us feel inferior to the other schools. And I feel like, um, if we focus on each other in this class and the importance of how, um, this class is beneficial for our, not only our school, but for our classmates and for each other, then that just kind of makes like all the bad things or any of the negativity heard about this class just kind of like go away.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Thank you, uh, presenters. We appreciate, uh, we appreciate what you, what you've shared. We could probably do this all day, but at, but at eleven nineteen, we're going to thank you very much for your presentation. You guys have a golden night.
Can you get a photo break with them, a photo op with them?
We, we've already taken pictures, but if board members would like to go, if board members would like to go take a picture with them, that's fine. The next item on today's agenda is a presentation on the partnership model with Education Policy Innovation Collaborative, or EPIC. This presentation references the research on Michigan's partnership model conducted by EPIC. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Sucee Carnell, Chief Deputy Superintendent Gloria Chapman, Director in the Office of Partnership Districts, Emily Moore, MPP, Managing Director of EPIC, Michigan State University, and Dr. Jeremy Singer, Postdoctoral Research Associate of EPIC at MSU. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. Presenters, welcome. We apologize for being, uh, behind today.
Good morning, Dr. Rice, and good morning, remaining board members. As you can tell, that was a tough, or this is a tough act to follow. My name is Sucee Carnell, and with me is, uh, Ms. Emily Moore, Ms. Gloria Chapman, as you had said, Dr. Rice, and Dr. Jeremy Singer. We're here today to talk about the partnership district model. We're gonna start with a brief overview of the partnership district model. We'll talk about the findings from EPIC. And do you want me to wait, Dr. Rice?
Nope. Keep rolling forward.
Okay, thank you. Um, the findings from EPIC. And then, um, Ms. Chapman will, uh, end our presentation on next steps concerning the benchmark review. I just want to remind the board of the foundation for the partnership model. It is based off of Every Student Succeed Act, which is a federal law. And in part of that federal law, the Michigan Department of Education had to develop a plan to address the lowest performing schools while building the capacity of the district. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Chapman. Oh, Lord. I lost the presentation, Dr. Rice. Here we go.
To give us time to get our board back, Dr. Carnell.
Can I have, uh, someone to hit the clip?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll do it for you.
Good morning, again. Um, again, this is just a brief overview. Section twenty-two P requires a, requires a district, a public school academy, to have a signed partnership agreement in place no later than ninety days after the date of assignment as a partnership district. The purpose of the partnership model is to improve student achievement levels in the lowest performing schools in Michigan. Within the purpose of the direct, oh, I'm sorry, within the purpose are direct and indirect efforts to improve student achievement. Examples of direct efforts include, oh, didn't go. Examples of indirect effort, efforts to improve student achievement may include student, I'm sorry, school board training, teacher recruitment, and also retention efforts. We have a total partnership districts.
Forty-seven.
I'm sorry.
You should look at the, this is the slide that's presenting. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm reading that. Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, go ahead. Can you take that off right here?
You can look up there.
Okay. So, total partnership districts, we have forty-seven. Traditional districts, we have a total of nineteen. And we have twenty-eight public school academies. The alignment between partnership agreements and Michigan's top ten Strategic Edu- Education Plan is illustrated on this slide. Across all partnership agreements, you will find emphasis on improved proficiency and growth in English language. Gosh, uh-oh. I apologize. My fingers are quicker than. Improved proficiency and growth in English language arts and, can we go down to that?
Can you not see the slide?
I'm looking at this right here, but I'm reading this over here. Okay, go ahead and move this down. I wanna move this up.
I don't know how.
Okay, so across all partnership agreements, you will find emphasis on improved proficiency and growth in English language arts and, and the improved graduation rates and resident student attendance, also supporting the whole child and increasing student recruitment and retention. I'd like to introduce right now, Mr. Uh, sorry, Dr. Jeremy Singer from EPIC, and he will present the following slides.
Just quickly, members of the board, Dr. Rice, as Gloria said, I'm Emily Moore, the Managing Director at EPIC. Uh, we're glad to be back sharing with you again this year the results of our study of the partnership model. I'm joined by my colleague, Dr. Jeremy Singer, who's representing a large team of researchers focused on this work. Excuse me. Before he begins, I wanted to just quickly talk about EPIC. Many of you are already very familiar with us. But as a brief reminder, since two thousand seventeen, we've been dedicated to research with consequence. We partner with MDE to provide rigorous, independent, outside research and evaluation to inform policy and program decisions that will ultimately benefit students in Michigan. We're fortunate to collaborate with MDE on several ongoing lines of research, including this one. And we're grateful to engage with you today about this work.
Thanks, everyone, and thank you all for your time today. So, we'll cover three things on our agenda. First, we'll talk, we'll look backwards a little and talk about what the effect of the partnership model was for rounds one, two, and three, which have concluded. We'll also give you a preview of what we've learned so far about the current round, round four of partnership schools and districts, and what questions we'll be answering this year and in the future. And we'll briefly end with some implications and recommendations. So, uh, some of you have heard from this project in the past. EPIC has been studying the partnership model for now six years, going into its seventh year, actually, next school year. So, we're currently in the sixth year of the study. And this is a large mixed method study, so that means that we conduct case studies. We do an annual survey of educators, that's teachers and principals in partnership districts. We also have conducted observations and been lucky to sit in on meetings between the Office of Partnership Districts and, uh, Partnership District leadership. And then we use the big, uh, data sets on students and teachers from the state of Michigan to conduct statistical analyses of student outcomes and issues such as teacher retention. And so, uh, to start here, uh, bringing all that data together, I wanna talk about what we know about the effect of the partnership model for the previous rounds, the ones who are no longer, or at least that, uh, which had formally ended recently, but the rounds one, two, and three of the partnership model. To give everybody a reminder of the timeline, so the first round of partnership schools were identified in spring two thousand seventeen. Uh, and so, the first year that they were implementing their effort at improvement was in the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year. In that year, there was also an additional second and third round of partnership schools and districts identified. Uh, and so, those continued, uh, with their plans for the first time in two thousand eighteen, nineteen. As you know, things for education here in Michigan and in general were disrupted a bit during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. So, their improvement efforts and their partnership agreements continued into the pandemic. And then they were given some grace and extended the opportunity to continue with their improvement plans, uh, through the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two school year. So, I'll be focusing on these, um, former partnership schools and districts to start. And I do want to quickly remind, uh, the board that, um, EPIC had presented previously and, and shared on some promising results prior to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. So, partnership schools and districts had shown some improvement in math and ELA student outcomes relative to other low performing schools, uh, to which they could be compared. And so, the goal for now is to give you an update through the COVID-nineteen pandemic, through the end of their tenure as partnership schools, and what were some of those results. So, the graph that you're looking at on the screen now shows, um, English language arts results for partnership schools in round one. That's the green line. Round two and three, the dark blue line, and then comparison schools, uh, which is the silver line. Uh, the reason you're seeing negative numbers here is because what you're looking at are relative standardized test scores. So, that tells compared to the state average. That's why they're negative, because these are schools that are scoring below the state average, on which you can see partnership schools at the, uh, very bottom of the, um, graph there, and then schools which we were using as comparison at the top. Uh, and what you can see, at least in the first part of this slide, is that upward trend, that upward trajectory that we were talking about prior to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. You can see that dotted line, which represents the disruptions to regular testing that occurred during the pandemic. And what we were here to report today is that, what we found is that, coming through the pandemic, we did see that partnership schools fared as well, or in some cases, better than similar schools or comparable schools, uh, in third through eighth grade ELA. We found similar results, by the way, for eleventh grade, uh, test scores on the SAT. But we'll just focus on the third through eighth grade scores here, here for the sake of time. So, essentially what you're looking at here is you can see that there was a modest increase relative to other schools and districts for the rounds one and two and three schools. And comparison schools, by contrast, declined a little bit through the pandemic. And you can see something similar here when it comes to math. So, we're looking at a similar type of graph here. You can see that pre-pandemic positive upward trend. And then you can see that round one and two and three schools fared better than comparison schools through the COVID-nineteen pandemic. So, that's a focus on student outcomes in these districts. Uh, the second thing I wanna focus on is teacher outcomes, which is an important intermediate condition for student success. So, we, we've been looking at teacher turnover and teacher retention as an important outcome as well. And what you're looking at here is the output of a statistical model where we looked at the likelihood that teachers would leave their schools year over year. Uh, and so, on the left side, what you can see is the estimates are around zero, telling us that compared to similar kinds of schools, partnership schools' teachers were no more or less likely to leave their schools. And then you can see a downward trend after these schools were identified as partnership schools on the right-hand side of the screen, especially into years three and four and five. And so, what's that, what that's telling us is that partnership school teachers were a little bit less likely to leave their schools compared to teachers at similar or comparable schools. And we know that they are a great cost for schools and districts when it comes to replacing teachers and identifying, uh, strong teachers. So, this kind of improvement was, uh, an important condition that helps us understand what some of those, what might have been underneath some of those improvements that we saw. To, to put this into, uh, clearer terms, w- we know that these districts, or these schools, I should say, had around a twenty-five percent teacher turnover each year. And so, a five percentage point or more decrease in the probability that a teacher will turn, will turn over is pretty significant. That's like retaining sixteen of your teachers every year, uh, instead of only fifteen the prior year in a school of twenty teachers. Okay, so that's looking backwards at the first three rounds of partnership schools. But where we are right now is in the middle of round four of partnership schools and districts. So, we want to give you a brief update on what we've learned so far. So, the newest round of partnership schools and districts were identified in fall two thousand twenty-two. And they developed their partnership agreements and their school improvement plans over spring and summer two thousand twenty-three. And where we are right now is near the end of the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So, we're nearing the end of the first year of implementation of those improvement plans and partnership agreements. Uh, at EPIC, we put out three reports over the course of the last year, which were based on our data collection during the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And our goal, because this was a year when those schools were identified, our goal was to better understand what the present conditions were in those partnership schools and districts preceding their efforts at, uh, school improvement. preceding their efforts at school improvement, preceding their development of these new improvement plans, signing of the partnership agreements, and so on. And we focused on three main areas, which we're going to continue to focus on over time. That's human capital, so staffing, teacher retention, recruitment, and including school leadership as well. And then, of course, we're focused on student achievement, so we're also focused on the infrastructure for improving instruction and other organizational conditions for learning. And then the third would be on student attendance and more generally on student well-being. I don't want to spend too much time on this right now, because, as I mentioned, this was all about understanding the, sort of the conditions in which the partnership model would be intervening, but I'll briefly mention, you know, we identified some challenges. For example, high rates of teacher turnover, some challenges with chronic absenteeism increase, and the need to improve core instruction and curriculum. But we also documented a lot of strategies that were already in place in these schools, for example, trying to implement new efforts at recruitment and retention and potentially grow your own programs, trying to develop new forms of professional development to support staff, and attending to specific practices to promote student attendance and well-being. So those are documented in these reports, and they kind of give us a baseline upon which we're now building on our current research. Since we're talking about the partnership model and the role of the Department of Education in helping to shepherd it forward, we want to make sure to highlight a few things that have come, come through in our research so far in terms of the way that the Department of Education and also ISDs and RISAs have supported partnership schools and districts. This is a finding about our current round of partnership schools and districts, but it's pretty consistent with what we learned from round one, two, and three as well, which is that there are a few different ways that the involvement of MDE and the ISDs are helpful for partnership schools and districts. The first is the intentional planning process that the districts and schools go through as they enter into their partnership agreements. So I have a couple quotes on the slide here, but I'll just pull out some highlights for you. For example, we had one district leader who talked to us about how it felt like there was a new urgency and direction that was introduced as they engaged with the department in this planning process. And we had another partnership district leader at Char School in this case, who talked about feeling like they wanted to be continuous improvement-oriented, but it was really the partnership planning process that helped them bring that into focus and do that with fidelity. So in addition to the planning, the second thing we wanted to highlight is the role of active engagement and support from the department and the ISDs as well. So for example, we talked to one district leader, partnership district leader, who talked to us about plans for professional development that wouldn't have otherwise been possible without the involvement of their ISD. And so they, they identified some specific areas in their school improvement plan where the ISD had technical expertise and resources that they could lend to support. And then we have another example. The, a Char School leader talked to us about having this sort of meeting of the minds, where you have your ISD, you have representatives from MDE, and you have, in their case, also people from their authorized and their char management organization, who are all working together to support, to provide and identify new training and other resource opportunities. So to give you a little bit of a preview on what research we'll be conducting going forward, we have a pretty good understanding of where partnership schools and districts were at when they were first identified, and we're currently wrapping up an analysis of what the partnership schools and districts plans look like, the ones that they are already in the process of implementing. We're hoping to have that released soon. We'll also then have a report coming up that talks through what this first year of implementation looked like, based on our research with case studies and survey data. And then eventually, when the big data sets become available to us, we'll talk about what progress we've seen so far when it comes to academic achievement and growth, teacher retention, and student attendance, among other outcomes. Some brief implications from what we've learned from prior partnership schools and districts and what we've continued to learn from the current round is that the model has helped schools and districts improve some of the systems that they have in place, and ultimately the outcomes, including evidence that the partnership schools fared as well or better than comparison schools through the COVID-19 pandemic. We know that MDE and ISD and the supports that they provide, from the planning process to additional funding, to ongoing training and technical expertise, are all playing a positive role. We will highlight that recruiting and retaining and supporting teachers remains one of the critical issues for these districts and schools, and so efforts statewide that are focused on that, and that are especially focused on these contexts of high teacher turnover rates are, are critical. And so please stay tuned for more evidence as we continue to conduct this research.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Singer. And my fingers, I hope, and everything are, are working together at this point. What I'd like to do, over the next few slides, just review again the levels of support. So what we have are. One second. Okay. So we have our three levels of support: intensive, essential, and fundamental. Intensive is our districts with a previous partnership district operating. Do you want to go down? Okay, that's what I'm missing. Okay, thank you. So intensive districts with a previous partnership agreement operating previously identified partnership schools. The essential districts, our districts of schools identified for comprehensive support and improvement that have not had a previous partnership district, a partnership agreement, or previous partnership districts who have only new schools identified for support. Fundamental districts, our districts of schools identified for CSI only because of low graduation rates. The levels of support are further described in Michigan's ESF plan. The expectations of partnership districts with intensive support are two onsite meetings per month. The director or assistant director of OPD participates in writing the partnership agreement and develops aligned measurable eighteen-month interim target benchmarks and the thirty-six month end target outcomes. That will be achieved for each school identified in the partnership agreement. The expectations of partnership districts with essential supports are onsite monthly meetings between the liaison and the district. The remaining two bulleted items are the same as intensive levels of support. The expectations of districts receiving fundamental support include onsite every other month meeting between liaison and district leadership. Bullet points two and three are the same for all three levels. The next several slides will review the upcoming benchmark review for partnership districts. Section 21H requires that measurable benchmarks that will be met within eighteen months to improve student achievement and identification of expected student achievement outcomes to be obtained within three years after assignment to partnership. The Office of Partnership District conducts a benchmark review for each partnership district to meet this requirement. This slide is on the benchmark review. Benchmarks that will be reviewed during the benchmark review. So during the benchmark review, we conduct what is known as, it's a benchmark review, but it's a structured conference. Our onsite review begins September 24 and will end on December 13 for the forty-seventh partnership districts. Participants will include the district superintendent, the ISD, RISA superintendent, and its designated. I'm sorry. Sorry, I missed a slide. I missed a couple. Okay.
Hit it again.
One more.
I can hit it again.
So partnership districts have already, at this point, they have selected the dates for their fall benchmark review, the structured conferences. The benchmark review dates again began in the fall of 2024 and will conclude in late December of 2024. Each benchmark review will be on a in-person structured conference where districts will be provided an opportunity to provide evidence of having met their eighteen-month benchmarks. A summary report will be provided to districts by the Office of Partnership Districts at the conclusion of each meeting.
And that's our presentation for today, Dr. Rice.
Thank you, presenters. We appreciate, we appreciate your presentation. We also appreciate your forbearance.
Your forbearance. Thank you for your.
That is often not linked to work in, in the public sector or with public boards. Thank you so much. Board members, questions, comments, concerns, fears, phobias, neuroses? Liz Lipton, thank you very much for, for volunteering to be here.
Thank you for the presentation. This is a, an issue that I think is really, really important, particularly in light of, you know, what the alternatives are. In other words, I think that the fact that Michigan has adopted this type of model and dealing with, you know, our more challenged schools is really important, given that, you know, alternatives that we see and alternative models that we see in other states involve, and, and we actually sort of dabbled with this a little bit in Michigan, and thankfully it did not take root, which is sort of state takeover model. And I'll note that the, in Tennessee, for example, a state that's oftentimes lauded as being, you know, some sort of miracle, they're basically disbanding or walking away from their, their takeover school district, their, their achievement school district, and, which I think is, which is, which is a good step. But focusing on Michigan, the fact that we did not implement a state takeover through, through, through the EIA, I think is really important, sort of allowing the department to focus on this partnership and collaborative model. In terms of, I just want to make sure I'm clear on the identification of lowest performing schools. When that, when that analysis is made, it's looking at factors other than simply test scores. Is that correct?
Yeah, so the, the, it's looking at the school index, the Michigan School Index for Accountability, takes into consideration a lot of different factors.
Okay.
And of that, they're looking at the lowest five percent. And those five percent are identified for the partnership district.
Okay, but enough, but, but factors other than simply.
Yes.
The standards test scores. Okay, I, I thought so. I just wanted to.
Yes.
Make sure that I was clear on that. Some schools are permitted to exit prior to the three years. Is that correct?
No.
Okay.
No.
So it is a three-year.
It is a three-year agreement.
Agreement, okay. Okay. Are there any instances of schools that, because you said you're going to be, or Epic said they're going to be studying this over six years, are there schools that don't exit after three years and then that, that sort of stay in for another three years?
Schools can be re-identified.
Okay.
Based on the school index.
Okay, with a, with a new, with a new plan.
With a new partnership agreement, yes.
Okay.
If you're identified CSI, yes.
That's what I thought. Thank you. One of the things that, when, when I was looking at, at this years ago, when I was in the legislature, one of the things that occurred to me, and, and I love the, the notion of bringing together the districts, the department, involving the ISDs, what have you. One of the, one of the questions that I had is, is the, is the partnership model written into the partnership agreement create some ability for the department and/or the ISD to, I don't want to use the term enforcement, but can sort of monitor and, and make sure that the local district is sort of doing what the partnership agreement entails?
Our focus is collaboration. So when a district is identified for a partnership agreement.
Yeah.
At the table, immediately, the ISD is involved, other partners, and so the entire process is around that collaborative network. In that, it's only thirty-six months. Our goal is to ensure that districts have an opportunity to, with the team, within the team, to establish and identify what those supports are. And so once you're in a partnership district or you have an agreement, we don't want districts spend time going back to the ISD to say, do you have this? We don't want districts spending time to identify. So what we do during the course of those meetings, and I'm going to use the example of intensive, a district that's been identified for the intensive level.
Yeah.
We have twice monthly meetings, and the purpose is to make sure that everybody who's involved with that particular partnership school or district is seated at the table. When we leave those meetings, any identified supports or supports that have been identified but have not, the district for some reason or another has not received them, then we're able to hold people accountable for that. And so the goal is, they don't have to go out, they don't have to search for anything. We bring everything to them and ensure that everything continues to move in a progressive manner.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's just, it's just really, I think, a, a superior model, and, and one that, that is most likely to achieve the types of results that, that, that are desired. Would those, would some of those resources also entail community resources?
Absolutely.
Okay, so community resources or the, or the community, if you will, is.
From beginning to end, and what we try to do is we try to get districts to, again, not, not have twenty different community members, but to actually say, if you're, if you're bringing in, for example, Westinghouse, I'll use that, you have washers and dryers or whatever.
Yeah.
For school district, for that particular school district, then being able to stay focused on that, because we know kids need clean clothes, clean uniforms. And if that contributes to your chronic absenteeism, then that's the partner that you want to have associated with your district. So we try to help the districts to identify those particular needs to address those exact things that are keeping kids away from schools, keeping kids from learning and achieving the academic outcomes.
And then just a final question. I mean, do you think that, you know, do you, do you believe that, that, that the department has enough capacity? I mean, the reality is, it sounds as if there are many schools that could benefit from this type of collaboration. It's a good and sound model, and I'm just curious, you know, does the department have the capacity?
So one thing that we look at is, we want our districts to be able to sustain this, so we don't want to create other areas. So a lot of times, districts are missing the systems and things that are needed to be put in place. So when those things are put in place as they are going through the process, that is a way of contributing or creating that level of sustainability. We don't want districts to bounce back. And within the department as a whole, OPD does not work in isolation. We do a lot of cross-categorical office support between special education, health services and nutrition, CTE. Again, we don't want the districts to spend time trying to figure out which department has what services. And my colleagues here, what we do is we collaborate. They'll tell me, we have a particular grant that's addressing chronic absenteeism. We know you have several high schools. Would this be something that some of your districts might be interested in?
I wanted to say, I apologize if, if I could. I want to say that, that was an outstanding answer from Ms. Chapman.
I'm trying to recruit my, my fumbles on that.
No, no, I think that, I think it was a terrific answer. I, I will simply, I will simply add to that answer that, that yes, the department could benefit from additional staff, notwithstanding everything that Ms. Chapman said. There are systems that need to be put into place in, in these districts. They need to be sunk into the soil of those districts. There needs to be an end to revolving door, boardmanship, boardsmanship, revolving door, superintendencies, revolving door, senior staff. None of that contributes to student achievement for kids. The, the amount of collaboration it takes between MDE and the LEAs that are partnership districts, between MDE and ISDs, among MDE/ISDs, the partnership districts is substantial. The work within the department is very collaborative. All of that said, it can still be a both-hand. We can still require, benefit from additional staffing as support, without getting into the infantilization of partnership districts, which is not at all what we're, what we're trying to do. I apologize. It was just too great an opportunity for the commercial. Dr. Parnell, to you.
Well, if I can use your words, Dr. Rice, that was an outstanding answer.
Dr. Parnell, I appreciate that from you.
If I could just add to that. Through Dr. Rice's leadership, we've developed a system. So we don't only want to work with the, the lowest performing schools, we want, also want to work with schools that are on the bubble or near, you say, the, the bottom ten percent. So through Corinne Edwards' shop, we work with schools to try to figure out. So through Corinne Edwards' shop, we work with schools to try to figure out what might get them into that so that we have preventative measures to try to keep schools from being the lowest. It's kind of hard when that's how the system is built. But I totally agree with Dr. Rice that we could use additional capacity, because if we could have a ratio of one to one, one PAL to one school or one district, you know, think of what we could...
Remind us what a PAL is.
A PAL is a partnership...
Agreement.
...leison. Thank you, Dr. Rice.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Thank you, Dr. Carnell. To you, Dr. Pugh.
And Board Member Lipton took part of my questions, and just to be more clear, there were school districts who wanted the preventative support.
Yes.
And we did, and we did create the space. So that is Dr. Edwards.
Yes.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay. And my other question, and this is follow-up to Board Member Lipton, is are we helping school districts to create the capacity to go out into community and sit at tables that already exist? One of the issues that I saw, and hopefully it's not an issue anymore, maybe it still is, is that there are tables in communities that exist that bring forward resources and who's doing what. It's just that the districts didn't have the capacity to go to those tables, and then everyone was always asking, "Where's the school district?" So just wondering if that is part of the nudge, is...
Yes. Because we know that schools are part of the communities in which they're housed. And so for the districts, they are in charge of their partnership agreement. They know best who those community people are and need to be invited to the table. And so we, they take the lead on all of this in terms of making sure that information is shared, making sure that their community members are made aware of what the needs are and how that collaborative piece can work together.
Right. And I'll just reiterate, emphasize that it's a two-way street, is that the school districts have to show up at these tables, and I understand that they're stretched thin and can't always show up at the tables where these aha moments are happening within the community around how do they solve the community issues together.
If I could just quickly add, sometimes when you're a partnership district, that people come out of the woodwork to try to provide support. And then what the partnership district does, it helps, when you talk about build capacity, it helps the district to cipher out, which is the best type of avenue to travel, which best community partnership should we engage in.
Right, right, right. And again, I will just push, that's why it's good to show up at some of these tables. Again, I come from the community health improvement space, and some of these are already vetted thoughts, ideas, you know, it's evidence-based that's being pushed. And so I'm just thinking those are opportunities where you don't have the snake oil salesman or the, you know, the best new idea coming at you from all angles, but...
So it's really to try to keep the districts focused, and so to identify what their priorities are at that moment for this three-year period. So it's not to discount, but also, how do we get there?
Correct.
Who are those community people that can support?
Yep.
And, but yes, community, all of it, vital.
Well, and if you don't show up, you don't know what the art of the possible is. I mean, the reality is, you may show up, you may show up at a number of community events for six months, for a year, year and a half, before you find a good idea, a good partnership that's really transformative for your kids and your schools. So it's a little bit of a, it's a little bit of a, you know, you can't win the lottery if you don't buy a ticket.
Right.
You can't make the connection if you don't show up. And I, you know, I've been, you know, on both sides of this, and it can be challenging when people do schools as a hobby. But if they do something that's integral to schools and to students' health, safety, wellness, education, they may be able to really help take us up a level. It's a funny dance, because we have so little time.
Right.
But by the same token, you're not in particular rooms, you can't make particular connections.
I'll just say one more thing, and if those tables, if the right person is going to those tables on behalf of that district, then those tables become the echo chambers, or they hear out those districts. You know, what may be in the news is that, you know, you're not giving teachers salaries or you're laying off teachers and you have all of this money. But, you know, going to these tables helps the community to better understand what the issues are, and then again, really help to unpack solutions and give real solutions to the problem.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pugh. Anyone else? Mr. McMillan?
Yeah, I still just want to keep, I think I push for this every time we talk about partnership districts, is some kind of independent anonymous surveys, parent guardians, teachers, students. You know, I think we can, you know, there can be improvement in metrics, but it doesn't mean, you know, I mean, other efforts might have made better improvements. So, you know, just because things look like they're going up or whatever, doesn't mean that some other effort might have made it go up even better. And, you know, I mean, when we're talking about metrics, you know, we can, graduation rates can improve by making it easier to graduate. Math in ELA could be improved by eliminating classes that aren't math in ELA that students actually engage in and love. So, you know, I do think that, and maybe some of this is happening, but I do think that there's ways to really, you know, understand some of these nuances and really try and understand what is making an impact even better than just the numbers. And I'm sure that these meetings are good, but I really do wonder about the actual people like parents and guardians and teachers and students, something anonymous, something independent, not the district, you know, something that can be real clear and just very transparent, and say, "This is where we were at the beginning, this is where we are in middle, this is where we are at the end." And, you know, those are, I think those could kind of help alleviate some of the issues with metrics that sometimes can hide issues and, again, can be counterproductive, quite frankly.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan, for that.
Oh, please.
If I could address, I think, four issues. One about the parents. Parents' survey is sort of, they vote with their feet. If they don't like the school, they move on. Secondly, looking at...
Assuming they have options.
Yes.
I mean, there may not, you know...
True, but in a state with 841 local school districts, there are options.
I don't know. Sometimes they don't have options.
Secondly, Epic does a study, we did ASPERC case study, and they do survey teachers and building principals. As it relates to math, we hope that districts would get rid of bad math courses and keep the ones where students feel engaged. And we think that that engagement will increase scores.
I just meant, to clarify, I just meant like they may get rid of music, or they may get rid of other classes that kids, you know, help get them to school and engage. So that's what I was...
And that is a thing, to be clear. The narrowing of the curriculum over the last 22 years was a research phenomenon. It was a pernicious phenomenon, and it chipped away at kids' interest in and engagement with schools to the detriment of students and staff.
Right.
So that's an important piece. You were in a series of four.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. You know, I remember the fourth one, so I'll turn the...
Three of three.
Three of three.
There you go. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Any other reflections? Once, twice, thrice? Can't give it away. Did you see that, Dr. Singer? I tried my best. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, presenters. We appreciate it. Board, it is 12:02, and a quorum of the board is still present. As you will recall, at the March State Board meeting, board members requested guidance from and discussion with legal counsel regarding the creation of and the fiscal allocations assigned to MILEE pursuant to MCL 15.268-1H, the Open Meetings Act. A public body can go into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state and federal statute, in this case, to be able to consider legal guidance subject to attorney-client privilege. I will entertain a motion to convene the closed session followed by a roll call vote.
So moved.
So we have a motion by Dr. Pugh, seconded by Dr. Robinson. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder, absent, and Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. Board members, we're entering into closed session at 12:04. After you've picked up your buffet lunch, please proceed into the conference room. We will return to open session and convene the regular meeting of the State Board of Education at approximately 1:00 PM. Thank you very much.